It's time to go. And on behalf of council, I'd like to thank the school board for meeting with us this afternoon. I know we've got a full agenda here. Before we get started, Mr. Jones would like to make a couple of comments. Jillian, would you?
I probably need just 30 seconds.
All right.
I'm sure you are all aware that this, today is actually the year anniversary of Marcus. He's been here for one year today. And so throughout this whole entire past year, there's been a continuous overflow of people coming up and have been very gracious and have always, you know, just I'm very appreciative of Marcus being back and thanked him and asked tremendously for his presence. And so my family, who are my kids, our little brainstorm, late last night was that we wanted to say thank you to all. We do enjoy being back in Norfolk and just relish the opportunity to be here. We love it. I mean, I tell them often that Norfolk is home and truly, I mean, Norfolk is home for us. So this is just our appreciation to say thank you and honey, love, and been a year.
You're still here. Marcus, would you like to respond? If it's only been a year, you want us to go ahead?
No, sorry. Typically, my wife is at home when I'm at this meeting. So I would prefer that she's not worried about the meeting today. So I think it's extremely, extremely nice thing.
Thanks for coming down and thanks for this nice conference. We're the family.
You're welcome.
Glad to have you back. You can stay here this month.
All is working.
All right, well.
Well, hang on. It is a cake. I'm only going to eat it.
Let the school board leave. And I will say, she is quite a bakery chef. She is, she's the real deal when it comes to cooking.
Can we vote, Mayor?
I was just a little slicing. Any member of the school board who wants to, after we're done here. All right, great. All right, Dr. Houston, we are going to, you have the agenda. You have the board now, so please. I know you've got power.
Well, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. And we are pleased to be here with you all this afternoon. And thanks for that very subtle indication that we're not welcome to the party.
Dessert.
My goodness.
So I'll stop looking at the cake now. I'm just thinking. But let me know, please. But we, two of our members currently aren't here with us, Dr. Horsey and Dr. Coloney. And I think we do, okay, neither, neither, neither of them will be able to join us this afternoon. But we do have an agenda before you and the folders there. There are four items that we'll be covering today. And as you know, we've had a transition in leadership and we're working well through the transition. Mr. Spencer will say a little bit more about that. But we are very pleased with the direction that we're going and thankful to the administration for the continued hard work and focus that they are maintaining through this transition to make sure that our children receive the best education that we can offer them here in Norfolk Public Schools. The four items that we're going to cover on today's agenda, academics, we'll provide an academic update, a construction update, more specifically regarding the new school construction that we've been talking about for the last year, a budget update, as you know, the currently we have the numbers on the governor's proposal and those are the numbers we're currently working from. And staff will, Mr. Maniscalco will say more about that when we get to that item on the agenda. And then the superintendent's search update, Ms. Kaufman, our vice chair, will be leading the discussion on that particular topic. We will provide certainly opportunity for Q and A at any time during any of the presentations that you all want to put us on pause and engage in discussion, dialogue, or ask some questions for clarity. We'll be more than happy to stop and Mr. Spencer will introduce the other staff members of the administration that are here for presentations as well. Mike?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. Really is a pleasure to be here. This is a little earlier in the year than we had our second meeting generally, and it's nice to be here and be able to talk while we're in session. Really, my comments to begin with are to assure the council that, as Dr. Houston said, we haven't lost focus during the leadership transition at all. Certainly the staff, the teachers, principals haven't relaxed their efforts. We remain focused on teaching and learning. I think as you go through the academic review and see where we are, you'll see, see that focus evidenced. It's interesting to note, yesterday was the first day of the second semester for us. We have five months of school left in the calendar and we're certainly not writing that time off as we go through it. We, we know we've got 31,000 reasons that come into our schools every day to be successful in what we do. And that's exactly the way we approach each and every day. So in many ways, this is our midterm report, starting off the second semester. So yeah, we're excited about having the opportunity to talk a little bit about the various parts of the school efforts. And I think we're going to go right into academics and Ms. Kaufman, you're going to lead off?
Yeah, I thought, I want to assure everyone, I'm not leading the discussion on academic update, but I think it's important that it gets framed from the board's perspective. And so I would start out by saying that certainly ensuring our students' academic performance is central to our role as board members. And that we remain very concerned about the number of schools that are currently not accredited, accredited, excuse me, in the, in the city of Norfolk. So throughout this school year and since the last time we were in front of you, we have been receiving reports, more importantly, monitoring progress and creating thoughtful action plans to improve the accreditation status of this district. A few weeks ago, at our annual retreat, the primary focus was to create for ourselves and to share with you a realistic understanding of where we are, areas of concern that are prohibiting us from being where we want to be, and examining the strategies that we have in place to ensure that there is a continued and prioritized focus for academic performance and student learning in our district. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to, to Mike, to sort of drill a little deeper into this area of vital concern for all of us.
And we provided, thank you, Ms. Kaufman, we provided for the council a hard copy of this presentation. It's in the folder that's in front of you. But we remain focused on and committed to the achievable results that we've shared with council in the past. And they really are around on-time graduation. The idea that children that come into our district at kindergarten or pre-K should expect 13 years later to graduate from high school. If they enter into our high schools on the ninth grade, four years, they should be graduating with a diploma from our high schools. That's job number one. Number two is to get all our schools accredited. And we've, we've been challenged there and we've worked hard in that area. But getting all our schools fully accredited, we understand is important to this community. And it's an important part of this community's success moving forward. And then thirdly is around the climate, creating the right climate in our schools so that children can learn, teachers can teach, and parents feel actively engaged, as do the larger community in our schools, and the success of our children. Ms. Kaufman talked a little bit about the monitoring that we do for student success. And we've simply outlined for you kind of a month-by-month chronology of with staff and with the board, what we're looking at. It is, is very hard to have a crystal ball, if you will, to look at where schools will be at the end of the year. But there are good indicators. Everything from teacher grades to standardized performance indicators. And you can see the, the kinds of things and the depth we go to, really try to understand where our children are, where our schools are successful, and where we really need to put more support. And we're very keen and laser-focused on changing support where we need it in this city. In the last two months, well, I mean, we have, I mentioned the school accreditation. This is not new news. These are the schools that did not reach full accreditation last year. We have 10 of them up there. The four high schools that are towards the bottom, all of their, their issues, challenges were around on-time graduation, particularly with the dropout and dropout retrieval. But in different places, whether it be an academic performance or on-time graduation, they were the issues that we really are challenged with. They're the 10 schools that are currently not with full accreditation. In the last two months, as Ms. Kaufman said, we really tried to focus on what we refer to as thoughtful actions, that, you know, following the lead of the board, trying to do things in the district and change our resources to be supportive of the schools and supportive of student success. And to give you an idea of the kinds of thoughtful actions we've been involved with, that we believe will make a real difference for our children by the end of this year. We've been actively reviewing all the programs that are around prevention, intervention, and recovery. Any, any way to support children that are not being successful, we're looking at those particular programs, figure out, are there the right things in place to get children back in school, to get them back engaged? Children that are not being successful in core academics, reading, mathematics, what additional support can we find within the district to bring to focus on those children? We're actively retraining administrators and teachers around looking at data, particularly data as it relates to math and reading success, because we know that that is, that is the core of the academic program. In the last four weeks, we've hired, by changing again, some resources around individuals in our schools to help re-engage children at the high school that have dropped out or otherwise weren't actively engaged in the high school. We brought in what we refer to as graduation coaches, who will spend their time in our schools, starting with ninth graders, looking at their profiles, that if they don't look like they're on track to graduate in four years, do whatever's necessary to make sure that they're on that track for graduation. We've also placed in each of our high schools a GED program, because one of the realities that we have is that, as we bring children back in our schools that have dropped out, we have some 16, 17-year-olds that may only have one credit. And the reality is, if you've matriculated only one credit and you're 17 years old, you're probably not going to graduate from high school. But making sure that there's something in that high school that they can walk away with at the end of their education that'll help them be successful as a citizen in Norfolk is important to us. And so we placed a GED class in each of our high schools to accentuate that hope for each of our children. We've increased the communication about education to our parents. We're taking a lot of opportunities in talking about their role in student success, because frankly, teachers and children can't do it by themselves. The children that are successful in our schools have parents that are engaged and supporting children in being successful. And so we've taken some opportunities to be more interactive with parents out there. We just conducted a, what we refer to as an instructional audit of all our K3 classroom, which basically was just a snapshot, one day. We took about 75 of our staff, went into schools and looked at math and reading instruction on that one day to see where our strengths were, what was happening well, and where the deficits were. And we're rebuilding the program, particularly in reading, to reflect the observations that we made. We've expanded the use of some data systems to reconnect with some children. In one of our schools, one of our principals took the data system and during the course of winter break, was able to identify 61 children that had dropped out of school, basically. In some cases, we found that they had moved away and they were engaged somewhere else. In other cases, we found them in the city and got them back in. And we think they're exactly the right kinds of steps to take to getting Norfolk where it needs to be. We've piloted a couple of opportunities around student behavior and making it more positive, particularly in the middle school, but really across the board. You may have seen, and I know you heard from us directly, about some new training that we have with staff on crisis intervention, helping staff develop some new tools so that when we have conflicts in the school, it doesn't result in children being put out of school, rather redirecting the behavior and getting them actively engaged. And we hope that that'll reduce suspensions, keep kids in the classroom, help them be academically successful. Additional support for the school leaders, the principals and assistant principals in those focus schools that are struggling to get full accreditation. And so we're going, talking with them directly about, what is it you need to be successful by June of this year? And lastly, on my notes is the formation of a CTE, Career Technical Education Task Force, and one to look at a governor's STEM. STEM is an acronym for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics Program. A task force in both of those areas about creating some opportunities for children that are high academic rigor, but will also give them some real-life skills so, again, they can be productive citizens in this community. And so in the last two months, these are all things that we've taken on that are very focused to needs that we've identified, that are ongoing, that we trust will make some difference by June of this year. Not look, not that they won't be sustainable, but they'll make a real difference in the lives of children by the end of this school year. I want to pause real quickly and just identify a couple of the key staff that are here. Dr. Christine Harris, who's our associate superintendent for Academic Affairs, and John Maniscalco has joined me. John is the assistant superintendent for Business and Finance, and they'll be part of this presentation as we move through. We have some other staff here that we may engage, Mayor, as we move through kind of the next steps. Just kind of highlight for the council moving forward, we're not finished, obviously, with this school year. I indicated, we've got five months to go. Some of the things that we're continuing to work with, we're continuing our review of programs, particularly in light of the budget that we have this year, we know moving forward. We're evaluating what's on the table. I know we'll talk about budget a little later this afternoon, but it's obvious to us that we've got to take some things off the table. But we want to make sure we take the right things off, that we can support student learning and be successful. And so we're reviewing that actively right now. Part of that involves, Mr. Jones, the city, as we've been using some of their budget analysts to look at some of those opportunities and programs. Reviewing offerings that increase academic rigor for children is, is one that we're engaged in. That would include training with college board for some of our AP teachers to make sure that the rigor is in the classroom and that our children are getting the very best opportunities when it comes to academic performance. Reducing, finding opportunities for free or reduce dual enrollment. Dual enrollment being, you're in a high school setting, but you're earning college credit. We've had, over the last couple of budget years, some times where we had to cut some of those opportunities for our children. We're now working with colleges and universities to see if maybe there's some opportunities to bring some of that back on so our children can, in fact, get dual enrollment as they move forward into post-secondary. And then increasing community engagement. We do have a event coming up on February 7th. This is part of our ongoing relationship with the Panasonic Foundation. I think the council's received invitations and we'll hope you'll find an opportunity to join us a little bit in that conversation. And so I'm going to pause there for a minute so I can get a drink of water, but maybe there's questions or comments other board members would like to make, or that questions council might have in the area of academic performance.
Just on, on dual enrollment, would that be an example where a child is at Maury or any high school and then also takes classes at TCC?
Actually, Councilman, in the best event, they'd take a class at Maury, but the college would matriculate that credit for them at the university.
Okay.
And so they wouldn't have to be on both campuses. One of the opportunities, for example, we're looking at is Virginia State. We're seeing if we can get an articulation agreement. Some of your kids could be taking high school classes. The colleges looked at the curriculum. They know the level of instruction is college-level, but they'll matriculate the credit back at Virginia State for them so that if they do matriculate as a student there, the credit counts.
Would Virginia State then have a distance learning where there would perhaps be a college professor involved?
Certainly is a possibility.
And the cost of that is absorbed by us as Norfolk Public Schools?
Well, in the past, we've tried to absorb those costs and we had to give that up. We would hope that these, these relationships now would either be at reduced rates, or in some cases, it would be beneficial to the universities
Okay.
to actually cover the tuition cost, because they would be attracting children into their university.
That being said, this is where I was trying to come around to the response. Does the GI bill currently afford, if you're a child of a veteran, does it afford you the new GI bill that your child can attend and receive college credit? Is that, am I correct on that? Is it possible that if we have this system worked out, that we can ask the parent to check the GI bill and try to get payment for that?
Yep. I'm just, no, it's a great question. And we were talking about it earlier today. Christine, you want to?
Good afternoon. We did explore that option as a military wife myself.
Yeah, I think it's a great program. Yep.
We're in the stipulation state that they have to actually be enrolled in the university to receive the GI bill. So at this time, no, it's not an option, but we are exploring how it could become an option. We have some kind of agreement.
Thank you. But you're right kind of where we're headed, looking at some opportunities for kids that otherwise haven't been on the table.
That's terrific.
Absolutely. That impact, I'm giving it that much.
The AP tests and all, so if you're in an advanced placement classes and you test into a junior, you know, sophomore year of college, right?
This is separate. It's a separate initiative. AP tests and AP results are a little more universally accepted. These may be very specific to a particular campus?
They have to. The university is, university is sensitive. The university, I say I'm going to do it. You're not offering a level of classes that would be acceptable to them. We just have Virginia State right now, so.
Well, we've had other articulations in the past. And again, some of them were very rich budget-wise, and we just had to step back and rethink.
So if you take those classes, in order for them to be part of the college curriculum, you got to go to Virginia State.
Yes.
And you'll get credit there, you won't get credit somewhere else.
I understand. In other words, if you're going to, but you're paying to get that class.
Not, not necessarily.
No.
Not necessarily, Mr. Win. And you wouldn't necessarily have to, even if you worked through the articulation agreement at Virginia State, it's whether the uni, any university would accept that experience. I mean, it's part of the application process. If a child decided, well, I'm going to take this class that's being offered through Virginia State, but I'm going to make application to Old Dominion University, and Old Dominion's willing to take that credit, that's also a possibility.
They commit to that after the fact or before the fact?
It can be part of the articulation agreement. It can happen after the fact. I mean, it could be part of their transcript and analysis when they graduate.
The AP thing is a whole different.
Yeah, AP's in a different arena by itself.
Mr. Senator.
Sir.
Is it true though, that dual enrollment classes are where we already have done this? It is Norfolk Public Schools teachers that are teaching the class, but they have been supported by the university. The university has endorsed them and said that they are qualified to be teaching the class at that level. So we're not paying the university's professor to teach our children. The class was already being offered by Norfolk Public Schools, but now can meet the same criteria as TCC or some of the other universities we've worked with.
Yep. It's accurate that say that our teachers were the ones that were endorsed by the universities, were teaching the classes. We were having to pay the full credit, tuition, if you will, for the child to get the credit.
Yeah.
How many people?
That was an interesting point, yeah.
Gosh, two years ago at our peak, how many students did we have involved in dual credit?
About 300.
Yeah.
320 students.
I mean, in any given school year, two or three years ago, we would have that many. Spread out over the five high schools.
So we have partnerships with other, we have a partnership with EVMS. And so do we pay for that as well?
We do have a partnership at EVMS. We have a specialty program, medical magnet program, that's housed at Maury High School. As part of that agreement, we do have a lease agreement with them for our students. But again, it's our teachers that go over and work with the students. But it's on the campus of EVMS and we use their facilities and there's some minimal cost for what?
No credits.
No credits in that case.
It's favorable when the kid is going to come.
Oh, yeah. It's a great experience.
Okay. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the construction update. Of course, we've been having this conversation for about a year now. We're excited about the new schools that we hope to begin construction with, hopefully within the next year or so. But regarding the Camp Estella and Richard Bowling projects, here's the progress we've...
Can I ask you to stop?
Sure.
Pardon? Crossroads. Is there a timeline on when, when we're going to finish that program, move on to this?
Timeline for the opening of Crossroads? We're looking at fall 2012, this, this coming fall.
Yes, so, but will it be ready by the time you open school?
We certainly hope so. John, give me a note.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're always kept track. All right, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure.
No, that's a good, that's a good question. Thank you.
And John, do you know what the total, the final cost for Crossroads was? I've got like 24.8 million. Do you know?
It's, that's close as far as the construction cost, all costs, you know, furniture, everything involved is about, is right at 30, right at 30, with everything.
All right.
For all project costs.
Okay.
Okay, so the steps we've made since our last meeting, which was, I believe, in October, we've held a community meeting there at Camp Estella and talked about the K8 versus K5 model. And we've agreed as a board that we would move forward with the K8 model there at Camp Estella. Of course, a big part of the discussion regarding Camp Estella and the Richard Bowling project was whether or not we could or should build Camp Estella with the existing structure on that footprint. And after a good deal of discussion and assessment, we agreed that certainly we need, the best use would be to utilize the entire footprint of the, of the property there and so that we would demolish the old building and, and build a new building there on the site. And so a part of that, of course, had to do with moving the students for the construction period. We looked at several options and we've settled on the option of moving our, keeping our K1 kids from Camp Estella. And this was after surveying the parents there at Camp Estella. And we would keep our K1 students there on the southern side by providing a place for them at the Berkeley Elementary Early Childhood Center. And the second through fifth graders could be moved over to the old Dreamkeeper School, which we would bring back online just for that purpose during the construction of Camp Estella. We had good input at the forum and throughout, for the, through the survey for the parents regarding whether or not we would keep the K1 kids on that side of town. And so we feel really good about the interaction and dialogue that we've had with the community. We are ready to take the next step and we could work, begin the planning and design simultaneously or consecutively. Of course, we've had discussion with NRHA about a property partnership, a property swap there with the property right next to, adjacent to the old Dreamkeeper School. No, progress has been made on that. We went out and visited that site back in, I believe, November and talked with board members and executive director of NRHA about that potential land swap. And so we're just waiting on them to get back with us concerning that. And so at this point, we are ready to move forward with planning and design for the two schools. Dr. Tonason sits on the construction committee, and I think he had some information concerning that for us this afternoon as well.
To move forward, we need between $7,000, $8,000 if we're going to do everything consecutively. If there would be an economy of scale, maybe 6% of construction costs to do the planning. So we would hope as a board that y'all would see fit to put that in our budget.
I'm just looking at the capital budget from...
I'm just looking at the capital budget from a year ago. There's already $28 million looks to me like set aside for the school.
For the-
For whoever you decide to go for.
Right.
Right. And so you're looking for more, for more than that for this?
The 28 will get us to begin planning and begin starting. We have thought there may be some economy of scale to try to do more than one school.
Understood.
So that's what we're asking y'all to consider.
Can you begin planning?
To get planning done for the four schools and to have some money to begin construction.
Larchmont.
You're talking about all four?
All four. Yeah, sorry. So that's what we would ask y'all to consider.
So wait a minute, so we're talking about building four?
Well, we're talking about five and six years. We did one thanks to-
The Crossroads.
The money, so we're talking about four more. And our thought was, we have the four that we will begin. So we thought we would begin the entire process for all four of them and get them going. That's our hope.
Have you decided on a placement or renovate all four? Has that been-
We're talking still-
It's a sensitive subject for some people.
Right. For both Ocean View and Larchmont, there have been some considerations. Our first consideration is a site that will meet the needs of all of our children. As you know, some of the schools have, I think Larchmont at this point maybe has a ramp for when people break legs. So we would take a look at the degree to which the historic value, what could be saved. But our first desire as a school board is to make sure that we are able to meet the needs of students who may have disabilities or not ambulatory or whatever.
What was the answer to my question?
The answer is, we're still considering, we would save where appropriate for historical purposes would be the answer. But that's not priority number one.
Starting to the planning process, you would have to, seem to me, have made that decision before you get too far.
We first need to see how much of a school can be saved. As you know, Larchmont was there even before you and I were here, and- You may still be working better than I am, but, so some of the buildings have, Larchmont has some significant problems, as you know.
Before you get too far, you gotta declare.
Right, right, right.
You guys have voted on a list that sent it to us.
Yes.
Of what the priorities are. And my second question along with that is, is anybody monitoring Jim Webb and Mark Warner's legislation to add the tax credit on where schools, historical schools can be renovated and the tax credit is given to the company? There was a, they were pushing forward that at Bob McDonnell, Eric Cantor on the Republican side were supporting it as well. And I'm just curious where that legislation is. And it might be something that, once that's passed, we wanna be maybe one of the first in the state to take advantage of that opportunity. It might impact you hiring one company to do all four buildings. It might have to be separated, but if that's how you're gonna approach it. But there is an opportunity there that possibly get, we would be able to offer tax credits to those companies that are gonna do it to lower the bid.
Well, right now, I'm sorry.
Where did the number seven million come from? You don't know if you're gonna renovate or build or what you're gonna do.
Well, the planning part typically is 5, 6, 7% of construction costs. We know we're going to spend, let's say, $30,000 for new construction.
30 million.
30 million, excuse me, 30 million for new-
Can we talk about that just for a second? Because, you know, the, we try to fund what you bring to us. We're obviously all very concerned about, you know, school construction, and I think we all consider it a priority. You know, the numbers, and just Mike or John or anybody can, you know, the number that we have in 2011, for the statewide average, the school construction cost for an elementary school was just over $15 million. And that's, those are statewide numbers. And why does it, why does it take, and that may not be soup to nuts. I mean, that may not be furnishings and all that stuff that you're talking about. Can somebody tell me why it's twice in Norfolk to build a school than it is, you know, on an average somewhere else? And I know we want high quality, and I mean, I'm not, I'm just looking for information because people are gonna look to us to say, are you spending your money wisely? Are you getting the biggest bang for your buck? How come the school construction here costs $30 million in elementary school when it costs?
It's not just an elementary school.
Well, in, in-
It's a case of race.
I understand that, and I, but I mean, but you weren't talking, you were talking K through eight on the, I mean, you were talking elementary schools on the elementary schools. So is there an answer to that, or can we, can we maybe get some research on that, what that means?
Well, we certainly look at the state average when we, we projected out with the city. I mean, we're looking at average square footage. The Crossroads, Dr. Robinson's right, Crossroads is kind of an anomaly because it's K-8. It's got about a third more square footage in there than, than an elementary school does, which is why you're coming in somewhere around $24 million. We also have some aspects of that school that support a middle school, larger gym and some, a media center. So it's a combination, it's a hybrid, if you will, of a middle school, elementary school. We've also reflected in there the community center.
Crossroads, I've got a $25 million.
So that's, you know, that's why Crossroads came in maybe higher than an elementary school.
I'm sorry, you said it was more, okay, I got it. Okay, what just, I had the $25 million figure, but then you said it's gonna take another five.
With the FFEs and, you know, putting, putting everything into the building.
And with the four schools, now, we, the board is still waiting for the report from the construction committee on Larchmont and the Ocean View schools. So we have not made a decision on new construction or renovation as a board yet on those two. We are ready to move on Camp Estella and Richard Bowling. Currently, the board has voted on those two projects. They will both be new construction, and it would be ideal, if at all possible, for us to do those two schools simultaneously.
Mr. Mayor.
If I may.
And Council, now, school boards, I just wanna lay out what we have planned because there's been a lot of numbers that have been floating around. But in the five-year CIP, basically in the first year, it was roughly $10 million, and that finished Crossroads. And there was basically a $2 million set aside, 2.2, but let's just use $2 million, set aside for planning of the next school. So if we count Crossroads as one, there was money set aside for planning of school number two. We had about $7 million of previous funds set aside for whatever that school number two would be. But the model that we inherited was a model of $22 million a school. And the way that this math worked was basically 10% was for the planning, so let's say $2 million. And then you had roughly $15 million for the construction and $5 million for the furniture and fixtures. So again, I get to about $22 million. We're talking about, you know, $30 million schools. And right now, just to put out what we had in the, what we have in the current CIP, is that we have money for that second school, counting Crossroads one, the second school and the third school.
Okay.
But then even the fourth school is only $2 million in the fifth year of the CIP just for planning. So it's about $46 million over this five-year period. But it really focused on finishing Crossroads and constructing two more schools somewhere in that five-year period.
Okay. Well, let me, first of all, I think there was another seven, the note I have, or at least the note on the managers, on the capital budget, is that there was actually seven and a quarter million dollars, $7 million.
Previous funds.
Yeah, but I mean, not in the 2012, but the 2011 that was set aside.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so I, I would be supportive of moving forward with the two schools, okay? And, you know, I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that. If there can be some economies, especially in a, sort of a pro-construction department way it is today. I didn't, the first time I'd heard you say you wanted the Dreamkeepers, I thought that was a good idea. Before, we were going to, I think, Bowling, right? And then you were gonna have to wait a year to a new school because we're eventually gonna close Bowling. The fact that you could build the new school, the new Bowling, and then close the Bowling and maybe J Cox, and we gotta talk about all of that sort of stuff. I mean, there have to be some economies here, but if you were to close a couple of schools and build one, and then the notion was the Camp Estella folks could go to the Bowling thing. But now that you're gonna go to Dreams Keepers, that makes a lot of sense to me. We can advance the Camp Estella piece.
The only thing with that is, you know, there's a cost associated with that. You strip the school down, you gotta put all that back in there, and you take it out again. So if that's a million dollars, you gotta ask yourself, what is looking for resources? Is that a million dollars best spent? So, I mean, I, I can't answer that question, but I, you know, I do ask, you know, in terms of everything we're trying to do, you know, is that the best use of a million dollars?
If it's a million. More might be less.
Yeah, and it's not quite a million dollars. Mr. Spencer, the numbers for Dreamkeepers, you remember?
What do we come in at? It was, it was over there. That's, that's for both Dreamkeepers and what has to be in the early childhood.
To build them simultaneously, it would cost us about a million dollars. And relocating children during that.
The, over at the Berkeley Camp Estella Early Childhood Center, what we would, the addition, we would place there to place the kindergarten and first graders over there from Camp Estella for the construction is also space that could be used after that project for adult education or expanding the capacity for the preschool children over there. And so that, that wouldn't be money spent just for a temporary convenience. That's something that could be used more permanently as well. Of course, the Dreamkeepers would ultimately, after the use for the children there during the construction period, that building would ultimately be taken offline. And so that cost that we would spend at the Dreamkeepers site would be just for that temporary construction period.
Well, I think the council and the community would like to see the numbers. I mean, what all of this, and how you intend to stage this. I don't know that there's capacity here to build four schools. You know, not only could you, I mean, just to manage that construction, but also you've gotta have serious discussions, especially, I think, both in Larchmont and Ocean View. But I understand that the, when the survey was done, the engineering survey recommended that, you know, Larchmont, that you needed a new school. And at the same time, they recommended that you could restore Ocean View Elementary, which is, I didn't realize that you could do that. And I think, I've heard the community would like that to happen. Andy, Tommy, I don't know, I mean, we've had some-
We've seen the design, everything.
Yeah, we've had some interesting debates around here about, you know, about re, remodeling schools, and sometimes it's an awful experience. And it's, sometimes it's more expensive, but we'd have to listen to what, there's some nostalgia especially associated, I think, with Ocean View.
But also the idea that a recreation center has to be part of that. And Ocean View has to be part of that equation.
And that goes back to my other question in terms of, as we build these, these schools, to me, it never made sense to build a $30 million, $25 or $22 million facility. And they're not built to accommodate the, the community as a whole. And so as we build these facilities, I hope that we're building them in such a way where the community becomes part of these, of these facilities outside denying much that the kids are utilizing these facilities. So if there are other things that we want to do within these communities or we need to incorporate in these facilities, then I think it's the time to do it, to get some economy of scale, to make sure that whether it be a rec facility, library, whatever the case may be, that, you know, we do it right the first time, and we don't have to come back 10, 15, 20 years in that community and try to revamp or create a new model. And so I just hope that, you know, that's a part of our planning, understanding what the community need, and making these schools become the focal point of the community, where there are other resources that are associated with these facilities.
That begs the question about Willoughby, what happens there? Willoughby Elementary? I mean, if you build a new, I mean, do you build it large enough to bring in the Willoughby, meet folks? I mean, students, I mean, and then what happens to the Willoughby site and all that sort of stuff?
It certainly could be configured to bring Willoughby in.
I mean, shouldn't it be?
Yeah, it should be.
It's a baseball stadium, you know, right? I mean, it's, I mean, it's a couple hundred, 200 children there now?
Right, that two, just under two, actually.
I mean, how do you, you know?
Justify that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, and I think the only justification you can give, there may be some thought about creating another preschool in the north end of this city. And that certainly could be an early childhood center. Otherwise, it probably ought to be considered as part of the Ocean View.
Mr. Burford, you're absolutely right. In the Crossroads building, there is a community center already built in there. With the expansion of, of the Early Childhood Development Center, you're gonna get that in Camp Estella also. And the, some of the preliminary discussions of what's gonna go on in the Broad Creek area is talking about putting wraparound services within the schools, the school building too. So that, we have that thought process in place.
Excellent.
Well, I think what we'd like to do is see the numbers. And while you're trying to come to grips with Larchmont, because, I mean, my, having, you know, all my kids go through there and having, I mean, I think you're gonna have, that discussion's gonna take months to get a community buy-in. Having lived through Taylor, I mean, it's gonna take very careful considerations with the Larchmont community about what they wanna do. Lord knows the site's big enough. You could construct a new building while the old, while the kids were at school there, which is one, you know, one positive. But, I mean, I get, my guess is because it's so old, there'll be some people who there's, who want us to renovate it. Maybe, I don't know. But also out at Ocean View, I mean, you gotta convene the meetings to have it. And there's a Willoughby constituency who likes Willoughby just the way it is. I know that as well, so all that's gotta be brought in. It seems to me to be smart to bring the rec center there. If, I know we don't have one down that end of the, I know that's more money, but we gotta, but the model that was at Crossroads is a good one, I think. And we've done it at Fair Lawn, we've done it at Bayview, we've done that a number of places.
You're right, I mean, some services can be also consolidated. You have the senior center.
We're building a gym at Ingleside right now. The whole reason was because when we built Ingleside, we didn't have a gym there. I mean, the kids were running around on their knees and trying-
There's a lot of consolidation. I think that Marcus would need to look at, you've got the senior center, you have a rec center that we can put in. You have the therapeutic center that's, needs to be reexamined and updated.
Well, we just spent some money on the therapeutic center.
But it may be something that we can bring into one-
Yeah, that's a whole different, I agree.
That's a whole other, there's a lot there that we need to consider. Not saying get rid of any of that, I'm just saying we need to, what can, and I know the community is interested in that. If we can do it, let's make it happen.
Would it hurt to start having those conversations now without Larchmont and Ocean View?
We have to.
I mean, yeah, I mean, just, I'm looking at maybe three or four years before, but I think people are getting antsy. And I was gonna, I don't know what the plans are for the police station on the south side, but while Camp Estella is being built, I don't know if it's been considered putting one over there as well. But, but we should have those conversations. And Andy's absolutely right in looking at the consolidation of the senior center and possibly merging it in with the rec center in Ocean View. They, they're asking for a rec, so there's none down on that end, so.
We hear that every task.
Every task force.
What's happened with Lindenwood Elementary School? You gonna talk about that, Lindenwood, is that on the radar screen anyway for renovation? At one time I heard it was gonna be closed.
Well, we did some renovation there. Well, we did some renovation there, Councilman, about three years ago when we reconstituted the schools.
Right.
We went in there and did some work with the technology in the building. We did a lot of cosmetic work on the outside and the inside, so we've done some things in there. Lindenwood is one of our smaller elementary schools. And, you know, as we look at consolidating schools and trying, the smaller ones, trying to figure out how they figure in, I certainly wouldn't take Lindenwood off the list of being one of those to be considered as a consolidation.
That would be consolidated with, what is that? No, on Toward Drive, Lafayette Winona.
That's certainly one possibility. If you created a Lafayette Winona that was K-8, Lindenwood could be part of that. You could take part of Jaycocks, Lindenwood, roll it into a K-8 at Lafayette Winona, with the idea that the other part of Jaycocks would go to the school that you built in Broad Creek. And so, you take two buildings offline doing that.
What buildings would you take offline?
Lindenwood, Jaycocks.
And can you close Jaycocks? Unless you make it a junior high school again or something like that. Yeah, you know, those two critical schools, and maybe one, but not both of them, you know, if, if any.
I like the, for me, when you look at strategically in Broad Creek, bringing the kids from the south side and putting them in Dream Keepers. And I say that, you know, not talking about the money piece of it, because it helps the overall formula of that community. The sooner that we can get Richard Bowling offline and clear that land, because we're doing a land spot.
Right.
Then we can start building more homes. And again, every dollar that, everything that we build over there adds to that TIP. So, that brings, that brings additional resources into that community. And it also helps us if we need to do a, float a bond and do something, it helps us offset that debt. It gives us the ability to do some of those things that we're trying to do, whether we're consolidating. So, when you look, when you look at it, I guess no two communities are the same, but when you look at having a TIP in the community and looking at doing something like that, and how you have the ability to do some interesting things that you don't have the ability to do in some other communities, it helps. So, in terms of that, the financials, I mean, it could be justified, you know, from that standpoint. So, but I do, you know, want, we always get into these projects, I would rather the cost to be put out front, and then let us defend it.
Sure.
You know, and we can defend it. I can defend that all day long if that were the case.
But we'll, Mayor, we'll make sure the full cost for the relocation of the kids from Campus Stella to Berkeley Campus Stella and to Dream Keepers, you'll get the full cost from us on that. And what it would cost us to move forward with Campus Stella and Richard Bowling simultaneously. We'll get all those numbers to you, so hopefully we can take the next steps.
I agree with that. I also think, something we ought to just think about, and you've got a one-man band over here, John and the construction manager over here. I mean, some cities, and I know, because I think Richmond is doing the same, the cities are actually building the schools, and then turning them over to the school system. I don't know if there's savings that can occur there if we were to do that. But we have a whole public works department that is used to building buildings. And as far as I know, John, you're in over there, right? Okay, and so.
I think it's really good.
But, you know, they're just not that, but we've never tried to build two or three schools at once. This is a different thing altogether. So, maybe we ought to have those discussions. And, you know, just remember what the manager said, we started down this road when we were talking about 22 million dollars a school, and that's the model. We also started down at Note 7, I think, actually, before, you know, the real estate started dropping, the values.
Yes, sir.
Not that it, and what that means is that if our assessed real estate value is coming down a little bit, at the same time, the cost of the schools are going up a little bit, it starts to impact on our ability to borrow. We're about 40, 47, 48, 49 percent of where we should be, and when you get your bonds rated, people wanna know what your debt capacity is and all that sort of stuff. So, we need to think about that for the citizens of Norfolk, you know, for our, you know, to see what kind of stress it's putting on our own capital budget. Not that there's not will to do that, but we need to go into this thing with our eyes wide open to see where we are. And then, but having said all that, I think we ought to move forward, you know, on a couple of these schools, if the numbers come together, you know, and with these two schools, and at the same time, you all go out there and start having your discussions, because I think that's gonna take you a while, trying to figure out what you think the school, the student body, or what's in the best interest of the community. Because then, because once y'all decide that, then we're gonna come back and talk about, maybe we ought to have a rec center there, because all we have to do is build one parking lot, maybe we have to make a road improvement, we can do all of that at one time, put up lights, all that, so improve fields, you know, for the, for the kids, as well as for the adults who are gonna use it. You know, all that makes sense to us, but we can't do that in one meeting a day, so I think.
Well, if there are some adjustments to the numbers, for the preliminary, you know, planning and design or full cost that we need to consider, the sooner we know that, the better. We can go back, if necessary, and look at our plans. These were the best plans we could come up with to move this project forward quickly and also to make sure our parents and families are comfortable, especially with the movement of the kids from Campus Stella. And so, we'll get those numbers to you, and if there's some adjustment that needs to be made.
We have another capital budget, which we'll be voting on here in May, so if we need to make some adjustments, this is a good time for us to do it. I'd be surprised if you can come back here with some really good numbers in the next couple of months on what it's gonna take to do two schools, not the design. But I'm all for it if you can. I'm willing to put aside, support some more money as a placeholder for the schools until we get there, so.
Well, for a K-8 at Campus Stella, I mean, I just don't know, obviously, it's not my discipline, but I don't know that anything less than 30 million is gonna be possible with a K-8 school. I mean, Mike.
No, that's right in the ballpark. I mean, that's what the architects and engineers are telling us.
Right, well, there's 28 million planned for school, for that school right now. I mean, when you put it all together, it looks to me 14, 7, and we've already put aside 7 and 1/4, that's about 28 million right there, and you won't be able to spend all that money in a year or two years. I mean, nobody other, so, okay.
Just two other quick things. One, I hope that the school board will not deviate anymore from the MGT study that was, they said which buildings needed to go, and Ocean View and Large Mont should have been next, but Campus Stella and Broad Creek jumped up on the list. And I understand there's different things that come up, but as you're talking about Lindenwood and Jaycocks, I believe Toward Park actually made that list before those two. And so, I hope if we spend all this money on a study that we respect that study, and it's a data-driven city that we're moving towards, that we're using that. And two, I think we still need to consider the old school sites that we've closed, and that when we sell those properties, or whatever we plan on doing with them, that we should dedicate any money that's made from that back to the schools, any new school construction. I think, even though it gets turned over to us, that that money, we should say, should go to it. And I don't know how other council members feel about that, but if the old Stewart site sells, or whatever the plans are with us, that money should come right back to the schools.
I would certainly be in agreement with that. I do think, Tommy, I know you're right about the study, but at one point, we had a discussion with the school board, where all of a sudden, I know the five schools were, the four we're talking about, plus Toward Park.
Right.
And I don't know, and I'm not, you know, I don't know how they moved up and down, but the school board came over here at one point and said, we need to move ahead with Campus Stella, and then, of course, Bowling. I mean, one of the, I mean, Dream Keepers wasn't such a bad shape, they had to close it, so.
I hear you, and I think you're right. I don't. I was just going off of the ratings that they gave, and I know Ocean View and Large Mont were rated at a much lower rate than himself, but also the K-8 decision plays into this, and getting a K-8 school, consolidating.
Right, and if, you know, as we sit here today, you don't know what you're gonna do with either Large Mont or Ocean View. So, we gotta have, you gotta start to provide us with some answers, okay?
Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is our budget. And back in the fall, the school board agreed upon, Mike, if you'll help me.
Yes, sir.
Agreed upon four budget goals that would drive our budget planning for the year. Number one was to protect core instruction, which is our primary mission. Number two was to attract and retain highly qualified staff, to promote the best and the brightest, to look for efficiencies to create capacity, and that is, and that kinda goes along with the thoughtful actions under the academic area, where we would really closely examine and analyze our current programs and see if we're operating as efficiently as we can with the resources that we currently have. And then, I'm forward to improve the quality of education in an equitable manner, simply saying, making sure that we are, making sure that all of our children, from those that have special needs to those who are gifted, are receiving the same qualitative education across the board. These are the goals that are driving our decision-making as we move into another very tough budget year. You have information in your packet there that kinda gives you an overview of where we are, especially over these past three years, a $30 million reduction in revenue year before last, and another 17.4 last year. Currently, we're looking at a $20 million gap, and so, that's quite a bit of money to lose in a three-year period. And so, we are, literally, we've been cut to the bone in having to make very, very tough decisions this year to meet that $20 million gap. Of course, that number still isn't the final number, of course, with the budget, the final budget not having come out of Richmond yet, but we're prepared to say a little bit more about the particulars of our budget planning, Mr. Spencer.
And again, I think it's a good thing that we're having this conversation now, because nobody wants to surprise City Council, and I think you know the state and their finances far better than we do. So, we're, we're kind of all in this together. Just to remind the council that, as Dr. Houston said, over the last two years, our operating budget really has been reduced by $50 million. And the things that we've looked at over the last two years is, one, we tried really hard to preserve the core instructional program, particularly specialty programs, cultural, athletic activities, because we know they really do impact the quality of life in our city, and so, we've tried to protect those. In doing that, we've eliminated 548 positions over the last two years. Now, most of those, we've tried to do through attrition, whether it be retirements, people that resign, try to reform the organization, but just about 550 positions have been taken off the board in our schools. We've reduced a lot of what teachers and school personnel on the front lines depend on. For example, tuition reimbursements, shopping cards, which is what we put in the hands of teacher to buy supplies they use in their classrooms. We've reduced secondary staffing of teachers, media assistants, stipends for teachers for extra duty, staff development's been reduced, travel for teachers and administrators, new equipment supplies. I mean, they're, they're the kinds of things outside of the core instruction we've really tried to look at over the last two years that wouldn't make a difference directly for children. We have had to eliminate some programs in staff, literacy coaches who worked in our elementary schools to really try to facilitate language arts instruction. We had a middle, middle college program in conjunction with TCC that really benefited some of our alternative learners that we had to close. We talked earlier about dual enrollment, and that funding went away. We had an elementary alternative program for children in the elementary school that needed help with behavior, that was interfering with their learning, that we had to set aside. And we talked a little bit about consolidation of buildings already, and the list up behind me includes the five of the buildings that we're in the process or have turned back over to the city by consolidating some services. So, that's kind of where we snapshot where we've been for the last two years. As Dr. Houston said, this year, we're looking at about a $20 million gap, and I'd like to detail that for you. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question. In all of the reductions that I'm hearing, they all sound like they're coming from the schools and the teachers, which directly affect the students. What kinds of reductions have you made in administration?
Yeah, when you go back, back to the list, Councilman, that I gave you, that 548 positions, it's really across the board. I mean, they're, they're in administration, out of central office, they're in custodial, they're in trades, there are some teachers in there, but they're, they're across the board, it's not just in the teaching wreck. When we talk about travel and staff development, equipment, it's as much in the administration as it's anywhere. We've really tried to protect the buildings just for that reason, because we didn't want to impact in the buildings.
I wouldn't go get into this yet, Mike, essentially, open that door. When I look at that next slide, and I see nurses, it was at 500,000, and I think I have textbooks, 1.5 million. And then, you know, and I have kids sitting off of public school, and do get to speak with people frequently throughout the system, the district. You know, I understand that in these days, you have to shop, and your pencil's just a little sharper. I do understand that we have, you have custodial, you mentioned custodial services, well, within the schools. But I understand you have another layer, where you hire this company, this outside firm that oversees the custodial, custodial staff that you do have, which supplies the...
We outsource the management of it.
Right, so, that's a million dollars right there, and that's another million dollars. So, to me, you already got people in the building doing a job, but you create another layer who oversees these folk, who gets a million dollars, and we down 500,000 nurses, textbooks, 1.5.
Yes.
To me, if you already got the staff there, it seems to me that you would do, that you would designate someone in the school and working with that administration within that school to be in charge of the custodial staff, or somebody at central office to be in charge. But to have another layer that we pay a million dollars to me in these times seems to be something that we need to look at, and that would be one of the first things I would cut before I would cut anything instructional.
And I appreciate your observation. Actually, that relationship is one that we evaluated last year. Now, in addition to the management oversight, that relationship also supplies all the equipment that's in the buildings, and so, that's part of their contract with, it's just under a million dollars. They also supply all the consumables and custodial supplies. And so, when we looked at it, Mr. Burford, it would actually cost us more than what the annual contract was to backfill the equipment, whether they be the burnershers and buffers and all the supplies, all the custodial supplies, would actually cost us more than the contract when we looked at it last year.
It would cost us initially more because we had to go out and get the equipment, but if we had it, we would be saying now that that wouldn't be an additional cost. I mean, it has to be some economy of scale. I know we outsource it here in the city of Norfolk, but it has to be some economy, some economy of scale if we were looking at all of our buildings and looking at how we could consolidate that contract. I mean, I just think that in this day and time, we gotta do things different, and that calls for having those conversations with the city administration, with Norfolk Redevelopment Housing Authority, these entities, well, these various department or that actually control the building or make those types of decisions, and look at, what does that cost? And to see if we could mitigate that cost some kind of way to put more money on the side of the ledger where we can do these types of things. You know, that's just me. I don't wanna play Monday Morning Quarterback, but since that door was open, I thought I would put that out.
That's why we're here, to have that conversation. Actually, custodial services is one of those areas, through the invitation of Mr. Jones, that we've used the city budget analysts to try to help us make some decisions, and so, we're actively in that process and conversation right now. To come back to this fiscal year, 2013, we posted up there a $20 million challenge. To come back to this fiscal year, 2013, we posted up there a twenty million dollar challenge. Let me break that out for you. First of all, the governor has proposed in his budget in December that the state's got to address the Virginia retirement system and make that whole. And partially, they're doing that by going back to the localities and asking for a greater contribution. For Norfolk, that means ten point eight million dollars additional to the VRS. And so we posted that one up there.
Is that still a good number?
It's not a good number?
I mean, is it still a good number?
We believe that it is as of today. It could be mitigated some, but right now, unless the General Assembly takes a different stance, that's the number that we've been told that we should plan for. The health insurance, we're part of the consortium with the city. For health services, we're looking at about a six percent increase. That's about one point five million dollars in the healthcare area. The school board has made as one of its priorities right now, at least it's on the table, a two percent raise for the employees in the school system. The teachers, other employees haven't seen a raise in four years. And so we think that's a modest increase, nowhere near the cost of living over four years. But to be able to retain the staff that we have, which is a good staff, to be able to attract when we have vacancies, we need to make some movement there. And so four point three million dollars would be equivalent to about a two percent adjustment.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Because when we talk about pay raises, to me, that's employees and retirees, and I don't know that we always make a differentiation there. How do retirees with the school system factor there? Are you talking about a raise just for the active employees?
Active, under-contract employees.
We have the VRS.
Yeah, they go...
The VRS has a built-in COLA tied to the rate of inflation.
Okay.
We're mandated by the state to do textbook adoptions. These are matching funds, and so the state makes as part of their allocation to us, and we have to match that. The cost to the locality is one point five million dollars. We did put the nurse subsidy in there because there's some conversation, I know the city's involved with, that over the next couple of years, we have to reconfigure how we do the funding for the nurses. And we think the first investment there is about a half million dollars to get where we need to be.
That mandated, that state mandated textbooks, now that's just the textbooks that we're utilizing. That's, you know, they use different textbooks throughout the state of Virginia.
Yes.
Yeah, because I served on that committee when I was teaching in Northern Virginia. So is that, that number is based on what we use, that we use in the city of Norfolk?
The state gives us, as you know, a selection of books that you can adopt. And then each locality has to decide which of the textbooks they adopt, and based upon that adoption is what we actually purchase with. So you're correct.
Mr. Spencer, real quick, with the textbooks, they match that, but we don't have to buy the textbooks. We just want to because they're giving us the other half of the money. They're not telling us we have to overhaul, or is there actually a law that says...
No, there's actually, if we accept the money from the state as part of our basic allocation for those textbook adoptions, then we have to match it.
Okay.
And I don't, go ahead, John.
That what it happened to be a dollar increase relates directly to the increased funding from the state for textbook spending. It's categorical funds, and we have to spend it on textbooks. The actual selection will be driven by the academics, consistent with the committee's work that you're referring to.
But I think Mr. Smigiel's question is, if we decide not to adopt or purchase new textbooks, is that an option, boys?
It isn't. Is it an option not to adopt the textbook?
It's categorical fund, so it would go away.
So we would just not accept what the state's portion would be?
You know where I'm going with that.
But I wanted you to have that...
Yeah, sure, yeah, I just...
So that's how we came up with that number of twenty million dollars.
Mike, just to get back to mandated piece, if you gave you a million, would they match a million as a matching funds? Is that what you're talking about?
No.
So you either got to do the million and five or nothing?
The state provides a specific amount of money for textbook purchase. There's a matching component to that categorical contribution. We have to spend on textbooks what the state requires. That's the increase that they added to our expense because of their increase to textbook funding in the governor's proposal.
Okay, okay, okay. The, I promise you, this will be the last slide that I'll share with you. This is still a very fluid conversation on the school side. As John indicated earlier, the General Assembly is now looking at the governor's proposal, and certainly there could be some amendments, some changes of what the General Assembly decides or doesn't decide to fund. We have until the middle of February to get a budget to the school board. The school board has marked in there right now, the middle of March, to be able to finalize their budget so they can get it to you by April one. Here's a list, I guess, of the categories we're looking at to try to balance this budget. Number one up there is looking at actual positions. Eighty-five percent of our budget is personnel. We have just over twelve hundred or almost thirteen hundred actual positions in the school system that are not supported by the state, meaning they're not part of the SOQs.
How many of those are teachers? What percentage of those are teachers?
Probably the majority of them are teachers, but the majority of our employees are teachers. But I mean, they go everywhere from teachers to assistant principals to media specialists and guidance counselors, custodians, para, teacher assistants, bus drivers. I mean, it runs the whole gamut. But I wanted, I wanted the council to know that they're about a third of our staff that's not supported by the SOQs, that, you know, if we have to cut, obviously, that's one of the areas we've got to look at.
Mike, just so...
To be able to balance that...
People that may be watching this, I just learned what that was a year ago. I didn't know. But people who may be watching this particular discussion, could you explain what that is and what that means? The SOQ and that it's not funded?
The standards of quality provide for us at localities the guidelines of how we should set up our schools. And in those, they define those positions and how many positions the state will fund directly from the state. And so when we talk about positions outside the SOQ, they're the balance of employees that we have in the city that serve our children, that are not, that we're not getting any reimbursement from, from the state. And that number for us right now is almost thirteen hundred.
And it's my understanding, that's a pretty, the state, is that a bare bones number, or is that a number that they think that you should be able to get by with? Is that what they're letting us know?
No, there's an expectation on the state's end that localities will, for lack of a better term, ante up part of the responsibility for local education. So there's always been an understanding that localities would support some of these programs.
And in turn, have positions that are not necessarily funded by the SOQ.
That's correct.
Can you tell us where we are, at least for the citizens to understand that are watching today, vis-à-vis other cities where we may be, or other, other cities where we may be with regard to having those extra positions for the children and the dedication that we have from that, let's say, vis-à-vis another city, just in percentages? You don't have to name one, but what's, is there an average that we're over? You said that's a third. Where do other cities... And if you can't give an answer, don't put one now.
Yeah, I think that's one we'll have to respond back to you on that as a council. That's a good question, and I think there's some ways to make that comparison, but it's hard to find one number that would describe it to you this afternoon.
I think it's important because it shows the dedication that the city has with regard to funding those particular positions.
No, and I appreciate that.
And that's important. So we need to be able to express that in a sense of market that, that the city is dedicated dedication, this is where it comes from.
I could partially answer that for you, maybe from a different route.
There's this, if Smigiel's not funding, can we get rid of it?
There's a local required effort that the city must contribute in terms of school funding. And I believe as of FY eleven, it's roughly about forty-eight million dollars. In terms of the city's contribution, it's about a hundred and five million.
Right.
So what the city is required to fund in this local required effort, and what the city funds is twice as much.
I think that's important for people to know. And it's important to get information out that, you know, we are, you know, the dedication that's there with regard to that, even though there's maybe some positions that we have to look at and reevaluate, I still think it's important that people know that, and I think many people don't.
Andy makes a great point. I mean, because I don't think there's any community in Virginia that accepts the SOQ as to how much they should spend, or literally, on educating their children. You name it, the state underfunds it when it comes to public education. We've always done more, and like the city of Norfolk has gone above and beyond what a lot of localities do. I mean, Mike, I'm looking at another graph here that sources the superintendent's annual report for Virginia, the last number's available. We're spending eleven thousand, three hundred dollars, over eleven thousand, three hundred dollars, child to educate. Yeah, and, I mean, that's the nearest, I mean, that's the highest of the seven cities. And that's, for instance, that is over six hundred dollars more child than Virginia Beach.
Yeah, we're eleven thousand, what's that, eleven thousand?
Three hundred and twenty-four dollars.
I often wondered how could you get that breakdown? I mean, I could do the math and do it, but, you know, from the state...
I'm just looking at this one.
There's the state, there's the federal, I mean, there's the federal, there's the state, there's the city.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but to get that breakdown...
Federal is a small piece.
You guys have that breakdown?
Sure.
Yes.
So when that number, the mayor just said eleven thousand, that includes state and federal?
Right.
Okay. Because Norfolk gets a little bit more federal funding than Virginia Beach because we have more Title I schools, I believe.
Well, that's what, that's what I was trying to understand, Tom.
Right, yeah.
Why we, the number was higher.
I've said before, I know that we like to brag with that number, but we also have to spend more money in Norfolk to educate our children. We have a harder population that we work with. We have a lot of kids who come in not reading in kindergarten, and the school district has already made cuts to a lot of positions that are necessary to bring those kids up to those levels. And literacy teachers at the elementary level, and you talk about the impact that that makes on it. And so some of the other localities, like Virginia Beach, for the last two budget cycles, they've been able to absorb a lot of the cuts coming from the state. Now, they're feeling it this year because it looks like they're going to be cutting some teachers, but Norfolk's been cutting now for two years while other localities haven't done that. And I believe Portsmouth just announced they're, I mean, you talk about scale, they only have to cut a million and a half, I think, out of their budget. We're talking twenty million dollars, you know, and looking at over seventy million in the last three years. And we're, those support positions that get cut are probably the most needed in an urban school setting. That's what's keeping these kids in the building. And you're going to see these long-term effects down the road when you talk about dropout. And, you know, we're fighting really hard to do that, but they have to allocate money to fund job, our job coaches, graduation coaches. Who knows how long those positions will be able to stay, but they're, we definitely are using those now. So I'm just, I'm always cautious when we say, yeah, we spend more than the other cities, but we have to spend more money than the other cities to get our kids to where they need to be, and it's a fight every single day. My thing is, I just don't know if people know that. And I think that we need to be able to express that. I mean, I didn't know it until I came on council and started looking at it, and had received that particular document, had seen the position, so many principals and so many teachers in first school, and saw how much, how far over we were. If that's the case, and if it's a successful formula, that's fine. If it's a not successful formula, then we need to reexamine it. I understand we are. But I think that people need to understand is that Norfolk does put money into the school system above and beyond what that state minimum is. And it seems to be doing it at record rates above any of the other localities. I understand what you're saying. Trust me, I would never question what you say about that at all. And maybe we ought to look at, perhaps...
Just like the local...
Yeah.
I just always had this, you said, why? You said we have to spend more money in urban districts than, and suburban, in more suburbia areas. Then my question is, why? How do you break that formula down? What am I spending it on? Am I spending it on instruction? Am I spending it on the child? I mean, what am I spending it on? So, you know, when we talk about we have to spend more, you know, for me, I'm perplexed with that, when I heard people say that. You know, I understand as a council what our job is, you know, in terms of fragile neighborhoods and what we need to do, disperse poverty and give people real opportunities. But outside of that, when you start to looking at the correlation, how that relates to schools, then tell me, why are we spending, I would just love to see that breakdown. John Doe grew up over here, and he needs fourteen thousand dollars, I mean, fourteen thousand a year. And this young lady over here grew up in the same situation, but, you know, different city, and they're getting nine thousand dollars a year, but the child is still performing. And so someone has to be able to explain to me, when those dollars break down, where do they go, what is it going towards? Is it structural based?
I think if you look at additional funding, I mean, things like the turnaround grant or the school improvement grant, additional monies like that that come from federal grants, that money is designated specifically for focused schools.
Right.
Where there are more challenges because of socioeconomic issues such as Ruffner or Lafayette or Campastello or Lindenwood. And so there are a good deal of grants in our compensatory education department that are spent specifically on the schools and communities where they have more academic challenges.
And we also offer, right, we, right, and we also offer full-day preschool, which I don't, does anybody in Hampton Roads other than us offer preschool full day? Yeah, at every school, though? Yeah, I think we're, and also, even some localities, I think they only offer half-day kindergarten even. We offer full day. So we have to get that jumpstart, though, as the brain's developing, to make sure that our kids who are not getting that support at home are getting it somewhere. And we do see the results of that because we have more kids that are successful. But, you know, I'm proud, when people complain about the governor's cutting preschool money, Norfolk's never, ever cut preschool because we know how important that is and keep that in our community. So we have a number of special education students as well that drive the number up, and some of them come from other cities. Yeah, okay. All right, Mike.
Yeah, I think we can provide some of that, Mr. Burford. Other areas that we have to look at in trying to balance off, evaluating, evaluating the program beyond just the core program, meaning again, that there's an SOQ of what school districts have to offer. Anything that's outside of that, obviously, we have to evaluate and see if it's making a difference for our children or our community to determine whether it should stay on the table. Specialty programs is another piece of, Mr. Protegeri, you talk about things we're proud of, we've always been proud of the kinds of specialty opportunities that we have for our children. Earlier, you mentioned the medical program at EVMS, the IB program, the Meadowbrook program for international studies. They're all examples of things that are above and beyond what we're required to do, make a difference in the lives of children. But, you know, when you talk about money, whether the funding could be there to keep those programs going. Transportation is another one. When you look at, if you looked at state statutes, localities aren't required to transport children, other than special needs children. Again, we in this community value getting our children to school and home safely. And so a big part of our budget goes towards running buses and making sure children have buses to get them to and from school, to get to specialty programs when they go across attendance lines, be able to get home after after-school activities. There's a budget attached to that that we may have to look at and evaluate those opportunities. Programs that exceed the state mandate, best examples I'd probably give you are things like athletics. We value that for our children. We know that keeps them engaged in positive ways. We've expanded greatly over the last couple of years with the support of the city, middle school athletics, high school athletics... Middle school athletics, high school athletics, opportunities outside of the classroom for being involved in the arts, such as strolling strings. I mean, we have great programs in this community for our children. All of those things are outside of the state mandated funding. Support services, and I know Vice Mayor, you had a concern the last time we were here about technology and the support that we had. But that's another example of support that we have in our schools that make a difference in the learning for our children, the computers, the support, the conductivity that we want to make sure is in place. And then frankly, facilities and maintenance. And I know we spent a long time this afternoon talking about the CIP part of it, but the, you know, the nature of our building and deferring maintenance and looking at our facilities that do cost more to run because of their age. And so that's another big part of it. And so just to kind of give you some insight on where we are in our conversations, there's no, there's no conclusion to give you this afternoon, other than this is not a, I was in Richmond yesterday and had a chance to spend some time with the Virginia State School Board Association. This is not a one-time deal. It's very clear that as the state kind of repositions itself financially, localities, not just Norfolk, but localities across this state are in for a different relationship with the state when it comes to, in this case, education, where we've traditionally looked at the state for being responsible for about overall fifty-five percent of the operation of its public schools, and localities forty-five percent. Over the next couple of years, we're going to see that exactly flip-flop. And the expectation will be for localities to pick up about fifty-five percent of the operation of schools. And so we're still kind of in a different time when it comes to education. And I just wanted the council to have some idea of where we were in that conversation. And certainly, having these kinds of conversations helps to inform our work. And so that's.
Are the cuts that are being made in this region comparable to the cuts that are being made up in Northern Virginia as it relates to education, upper education?
I think the nature of the reductions, Mr. Burford, are different in Northern Virginia. And I know I heard a little bit of that yesterday, but part of the reason is that Northern Virginia probably gets some adjustments because of the cost of living up there that we don't have advantage of here. And so when they talk about some of those adjustments, part of it may be mitigated by those adjustments they make. But I don't think this is just a Norfolk story.
No, 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 I just was curious to, I mean, there, you know, we always use the word the state, but there's, there's a difference, there's a big difference, you know, in the educational system here and the educational system there. Working, have worked in the educational system in Richmond, and the one up there, it's drastically different. So the question was, you know, is that forecast there getting better? And ours continue to lag somewhat from a financial standpoint?
You may have just moved from the education person to the politician.
I may not be the right person to answer that question. I do have an issue. Mike, when I read the New York Times or even Washington Post, there's always discussion when it comes to teachers, getting quality teachers, maintaining quality teachers, teacher, creative teacher bonuses and salaries. In your second goal of attracting and retaining highly qualified staff, remember the best and the brightest, frankly, I think you hit just about on every goal in a pretty clear manner. But number two seems to be a goal that is significant, similar to the SOQ type going so far above and beyond. But it also seems to be a, a goal that attracts students, much less teachers. And it seems to be something that, when somebody moves to the area, we have a creative manner of compensation, of retention, that, and I'm not an educator, but it does seem to be something that I read about that seems to make a, give a lively school, not necessarily board per se, but a lively school community. Is that something that we look at, other than, of course, the cross-the-board two-personate you said? But that does appear to be something that, if it is, if we do come up with something, perhaps the unions, it's something to talk to them about, I don't know how they play into this, but it does appear to be something that would set Norfolk apart.
Site-based measures?
Sir?
I'm not mistaken. I think it's called site-based measures.
Whatever, whatever the system we may elect it to be, but something that is cutting-edge, like Denver had, like Washington had, and I know Washington lost its superintendent because she may have been too cutting-edge. But when I read, that appears to be what excites people to enter into schools. And I don't know if we have that. If we do, we're not doing a good job of marketing it and getting it out to the public and to new students who are coming into town, and students who are not leaving and going into other schools or to other districts. So is that something that we can look at and creatively come up with that would be a tool to bring in the teacher and retain the teacher that is the best? And if you're not the best, then you need to find another line of work. But again, I don't know how that plays in. This is just, it's, that appears to be what drives kids to school districts. You get creative, great teachers and a creative, great school, but I don't see where we have that. And I'm not saying that, maybe it hasn't been expressed to me that we have such a program. I don't know. And if we don't, is that something we can begin studying?
Sure. No, no, I appreciate the observation. First of all, let me tell you that we do have creative and great teachers in our classrooms. And I think you know that.
I do, and I don't mean, no.
But keeping, keeping the cutting-edge and keeping them hungry to do really well is certainly a challenge for, for any district.
For any business?
The state of, any business.
Right, right.
Yeah, thank you. The state of Virginia is right now leading us into a teacher performance relationship. Starting July one, we'll have a common performance evaluation for teachers across the state. The next level to that will be starting to pay teachers, principals and superintendents based upon performance. And so it's going to create that kind of conversation, I think, for us, not just in Norfolk, not just in Hampton Roads, but across, across the state. And so we're moving in that direction. We're working as a staff to meet those timelines for the state. And creating that kind of performance evaluation.
I don't want it to sound, I just, I know that's what I read, and I know what you read. When you don't know, you have a little bit of knowledge and become dangerous. Perhaps that's where I am.
I understand.
But that being said, I, if that's where we're going, and we'll see where the state comes up with, then perhaps that retention and attraction could be there into the future. I appreciate that.
And that's a complicated discussion.
Oh, I know it is.
Because it relates, and one deals with culture, which is primarily, I think, developed and maintained on a local level, but, but, but even on a national level, when you talk about things like No Child Left Behind, the standardized testing, and what that implies in terms of instruction, latitude and flexibility.
Right.
And creativity in the classroom. When you talk about attracting exit surveys, like we just went over in our last school board meeting, really looking honestly at why teachers leave and what it takes to keep a good teacher, how do you attract a good teacher, then what it requires to keep a good teacher in the district, looking at best practices. One of our domains under our AR is the staff engagement, where, which, which again, applies to culture and the way that staff is engaged and maintain that kind of engagement, happiness and fulfillment on the job. I think student, performance has a lot to do with that. Everybody wants to be identified with a good district where there's high performance and, and they have a personal sense of satisfaction and fulfillment. And so I think it's a complicated discussion, and certainly we have to continue to have and look at all angles of it, but it's, it's not, it's not one aspect. It's not just pay, as you mentioned, that's just a part of it, you know? But it's how people are treated, it's how they feel about the job, it's how they feel about the city, it's how they feel about the district that they're, that they're working in, how they feel about the leadership and the management, maybe even how they feel about the school board.
One of the things that...
Wait, wait a minute.
Yeah. What, if anything, are we doing to reinforce character, you know, in our children? This might be two or three of them. You know, recently, the school board or the administration decided to continue to use pepper spray. So what are we doing in the lower grades? And, and it's two things. Number one, we know that in a lot of instances, we expect a child to come from home, to sit in their seats, to get education. But we know that in a lot of the homes that our children come from, there's some deficiencies. So what are we doing, if anything, to kind of reinforce character in our children so that they won't end up being pepper sprayed or sent to the alternative school, you know, things of that nature?
Gosh, Councilman, we could spend all day and talk about what goes on in classrooms across this city and how teachers impacted in a positive way the character of children, not only through their own role modeling, but through the curriculum. I mean, we talk about...
How come they're having food fights at Granby every day? You know, I mean, you know, I mean, just something as simple as not wasting food. I mean, there is, there is a breakdown somewhere if a child comes to school and you have these food fights every day. And I'm not, all I'm saying is that I, that somewhere, you know, we're suffering from character deprivation, we have some breakdowns in some of our hungry. And in an early, maybe as, as early as preschool, first, second, third grade, somehow, character has to be reinforced or should be reinforced, it would be good if it were reinforced. So then when they get to middle school and when they get to high school, they will come and sit down in their seats, they will be orderly in the cafeteria. And, and I don't know what percentage of our students are participating in these things, but it's a distraction to our teachers. If you have fifty-five minutes and you have to spend ten minutes...
It's certainly an issue. I, and I'm going to resort back to my old life as a principal. And I would tell you that schools represent the communities they serve to a great extent. We will continue to make our very best efforts in classrooms every day to impact in a positive way. Most recently, we started what I referred to earlier as crisis intervention. That training really takes staff through some re-norming, if you will, to recognize that all problems in schools are not children's problems, and that as adults, maybe the way we respond to children in occasions could be different and result in different outcomes. I also mentioned at the beginning of the session this afternoon that parents have to be actively engaged. One of the things I know from experience, and I think everybody around this table understands, is that parents that are actively engaged with schools in their children's lives have children that are successful by and large. And so for us finding opportunities to get them through the door, make them positive forces within our schools, just like we want them to be positive forces within our city, is an important goal for us. So I can't take exception to what you say. That's a challenge for us, but it's a challenge for us not only in schools, but in society at large. And that's one we're going to have to come together on.
Two things. One, to kind of piggyback off of what Mr. Riddick said, in, does our school system have volunteers in the early childhood education, in the kindergarten, pre-kindergarten, first, you know, first grade, to, to address those kinds of issues? Maybe former teachers, parents whose children are already gone, that can maybe be there to address maybe motherly-type figures in the schools to address those kinds of issues? We can't pay them, but if they are retired and they want to still give back to young people. I don't have kids, so I don't...
The, the easy answer, the short answer is yes.
Okay.
And I'm looking at Peggy Scott behind me, who's, is it okay to say you're a grandmother of children who still spends most of her day in our schools volunteering and doing great things for our children at Terrleton Elementary?
Do we have enough?
You never have enough.
Well, you have an early childhood program, you have a teacher and a teacher's assistant in every classroom. And so, I mean, you got two, you got two folks that work with instructional, the day-to-day instruction with a class load of about ten to twelve kids. So I would, I would think that that's enough in there because they're teachers, certified teachers, and the teachers, they, they have to be certified, you know, at certificates. And most of them are parents. And so I would, I would think that that would, would provide, you know, the, the level of parental involvement that you're looking for.
But maybe not. I mean, if we have children in first and second and third grade that are getting suspended and getting in fights and, you know, those kinds of things, those people are there, those two people are there for instructional purposes, but I mean, someone there that is maybe on a nurturing kind of level, children will come to school and their parents haven't complimented them, their parents haven't told them that they look nice, their parents haven't, haven't taught them please and thank you. The simple things that our parents taught us, those children are not, may not be being taught. And so in getting to, in teaching instruction is one thing, but maybe someone there to, on a nurturing level, to work with those children, to help them, just a suggestion.
I thought you were saying early childhood.
Well, in the early childhood education, in that environment, starting with them when they're young, so that they don't end up in, you know, alternative schools and things like that.
Again, I, I think having as many of those resources that you can have help to balance the playing field. And I think that's what Councilman Smigle was talking about earlier. We have children that enter into our schools sometimes with less resources to pull from than others.
Absolutely.
And we like to try to put them on an equal playing field.
The last thing I want to say is was on, and you guys may have touched on it before I got here, but it's on marketing of what goes on good in our schools. I go to events, sponsored by the school board and the education association. And so I get to see what all good things are happening in the school system, but if you're not invited to an event and you're not being honored as a teacher of the year or you're not, you know, participating, then the general public doesn't get that information. I know our dollars are short, but when Tommy was teacher of the year, there was a billboard. And everybody in Norfolk knew that Tommy was the teacher of the year. But there has to be a way to get our good message of what is going, the, the accolades that our students receive and the things that our schools receive that are positive. There has to be a way to get those out to the public so that the general public understands that there are good things going on in Norfolk public schools, not just the negative things that they may read about.
Mike, can I interrupt you a little quick? I, I would encourage other council members, Norfolk does do principal for a day, and you can spend a whole day with the principal at any of our schools. I think they're still looking for people, actually. And if you really want to get in the school and see how it's operating, what goes on, I encourage you to do that. It might be scary for some of you, but I encourage you to do it. Obviously, I'm in there, but I know the people that have participated in it have said wonderful things about our schools, but that's one way to get information that we could share, you know, to the community so that you don't always have to rely on me to tell you what's going on in the schools.
Okay. Brad, were you going to...
I just wanted to dovetail off of Tommy because I was principal for the day at Granby last year and had a tremendous time. You were at Moore, if I remember correctly. We had a nice luncheon afterwards. It was a tremendous opportunity to get in there. My, my boys graduated from Granby, and I was very heartened to see what was going on there. I saw the good, the bad and the ugly, and it was, it made me feel good that my kids graduated from there and that they did an excellent job of educating my children, preparing them for college. And yes, we don't get the message out enough, so I encourage you to do that. So I encourage each one of the city council member, please do principal of the day. If, if you can see, you can see what goes on in the school, and if you can't do it that day, I will go with you to the schools. I've been trying to make it to every school to do that, to, to, to meet with the principals, to see the students, to see the teachers. I wish to heck my kids went to the Young Scholars Program at Roughness. I was so impressed with that program. And if we could get that message out to the general community, I think people would have a better, better understanding of Norfolk Public Schools.
I just think there's so much of our story that's not getting out to the public, where our school systems, I mean, every school system has deficiencies and issues, all of them do. But I think that there are so many good things that every time I go to something, I'm amazed at, wow, I didn't know that. And I think that we need to do a better job at getting that information out to improve the overall image of our public school system.
I just want to say that, go ahead, I yield.
Thank you, sir. I have a serious thing I wanted to say, but in response to Councilman Williams and Mr. Riddick's question, I have the honor, because I am retired, of having time. And I've been visiting, I've visited about 15 elementary schools. I'm going there to read. And I have a luxury that many of folks don't. And at Tidewater Park, at Camp Estella, and at Ocean View, and all these schools that I've been visiting, I see character every day. I see wonderful, wonderful things going on, our teachers and our kids. And I can tell you, I have the opportunity in all the organizations that as I travel about, when I am confronted, I describe the wonderful things that I see going because our teachers and our Williams kids. But my serious statement is based on 40 years of experience.
We can make you a commercial.
It's wonderful, and I've just begun, and Mr. Spencer is supporting this. I'm going to Terrellton, when am I going? I'm going next week.
Very sure.
Yeah. This is serious, what I'm going to say, but having the honor of being able to serve on this board since July, prior to that time, I was proud of the city of Norfolk, the council, the governments of Norfolk, and the support they've given to education. I was proud of what, over the past few years, the administration of Norfolk has been able to do with the fiscal situation. It's just been shocking. But I am amazed, disturbed, and more than that, at what the budget that was proposed by the governor was an essential and substantial reduction in public support for education. And that has been confirmed by my contacts across the state of Virginia over the past few weeks. Essential and substantial reduction. More accurately, it has been a major increase in unfunded mandates. And I wanted to punctuate what was coming out here by saying that, and you already know that, but that's based on 40 years of experience. And I know that the folks in the school system will deal with it, and I know the school board will support it and you will also. But this is different. This is big. This is not good, and I'm proud of what the city and what the school system has done. Thanks for the opportunity to say.
Just wanted to say, we were talking earlier, we were talking about the, the early childhood program in the city of Norfolk. I would put that program up to any early childhood program in the country. And the component, the, the added component, getting, getting to the question, Mr. Riddick, as well as Ms. Williams, and, they have a GED program in those, those schools as well for these parents. And so they do work with these parents. And so it doesn't matter, you know, being a teacher, former teacher and, and taught in various settings, doesn't matter how much money a, a person has or what division they come from, you're going to have problems with some kids. They can have both parents at home, but you're going to still have some problems with some kids, whether they're first grade, second grade, third grade, you know, or right on up to ninth or 12th grade. That's just, that's just life, you know? And you deal with that. It doesn't mean that they don't have any home training or they're not taught what they should or should not do at home. You know, I just think that, you know, the schools, the school district can only do so much, you know? And their job is to educate first. We know the teachers can wear a lot of different hats during the course of a day. But I really take my hat off in terms of the job that is being done, because again, I have my girls at, at Norfolk Public School, and I wouldn't take them out to put them anywhere else. You have to have that parental involvement. But at the end of the day, we got a great district, yeah? But all of our challenges, we still have a great district.
Thank you. Okay, we have one more small, quick topic here.
Okay. Yes, as you know, we are in a leadership transition right now, and Ms. Kaufman is going to give us a quick update on where we are in our superintendent search.
And quick is the operative word. I am the unofficial timekeeper of the school board, and I am aghast that we are bumping up against our time. I really just have two slides to walk through with you all, and I would preface this by saying that as, as a school board, we have three primary areas of responsibility. One is to manage the financial stewardship of this district. The second is the establishment and review of policy, and the third is to hire a superintendent who can lead this district. And so we are now embarking on one of the most important things that we focus on, and I want to bring you up to speed on the work that we've done since December, when we issued an RFP for a search firm to lead us through this process. The result of that RFP yielded nine responses. We whittled those down to four that met our criteria. We did extensive reference checks and reviews on three of them, and we have elected to continue our contract with Ray and Associates, who is the firm that we engaged two years ago when we hired the previous superintendent. And an element in their clause suggests that if we replace the superintendent for any reason within a two-year period of time, they will conduct a second search for us at no fee, only expenses only. So part of our, part of our review process is making sure that we have the right firm, although I would tell you that they distinguish themselves from their other competitors in our reference search, and when you look at the cost benefit analysis, then we believe we've made the right decision. This next slide, which is the slide that I'll end on, I want you to focus on the word working, it could also be draft. The majority of firms that we look at suggest that because we're starting in the sort of a recruiting season, that you should be able to hire a superintendent in a national search in between three and five months. So we've laid out a timeline that allows us to land this. I think we, we left the opportunity to call an audible if, if we need to later in the process. But right now, we are in the final stages of establishing clear criteria, excuse me, for success. And that includes an online survey that's available to the public. I think it's been up for two days, and we already have over 450 hits on it as of this morning, to, to look at what the public's input is in terms of criteria. We've had our own workshop where we are finesse-ing and refining what it is that we're looking for. There will be two public forums held on the 7th of February 1 at Booker T. Washington, the 2nd at Granby, to solicit the additional public review. Many people in this room's input will be solicited through Ray and Associates. That criteria gets finalized around the middle of February, and then the confidential search will begin mid-February and extend through the end of March. Our plan is to bring candidates in for interviews in early April, depending on what the slate of candidates and the yield looks like, and first versus second round of interviews. We hope to have an offer in place in early May, and I think just in deference to time, that's a high-level, quick snapshot of where we're at. I'll, I'll take questions and...
Well, I'm, I'm going to say this as a parent, I mean, you know, this meeting here is probably one of the better meetings I've sat in with the school administration in a very long time. And really got some, some real good, solid information and not a bunch of fluff, you know? And I actually said, in this city, you know, you're always good, you're good enough to be number two. But when, when do you become good enough to be number one? You know, whether, you know, and I, I just think that when you, we've been around this, if you've been here long enough, you've been around here where, I hate to put you on this spot, but I've seen you twice become number two. And I've seen you clean up a lot of stuff within the district. I mean, when do we get to a point where we start respecting those who work with us and for us, and they get an opportunity? Whether they rise or fall, when do they get that opportunity to succeed in this district? You know, we just had a guy in and, you know, you know, we, we took a lot of heat in the paper, the city council took it as well as you guys did. I just think it's time to get our own housing on before we go out there and figure out what we, do we know what we need? We need to drive the train this time and not allow someone else to come in and drive the train. We need to get our methodology right, we need to understand what it is we need to do and how we move our, our students and our families forward in the city of Norfolk and provide the best possible education we can, we can possibly provide. And then we key in someone that comes in and understands what we're trying to accomplish. That's just me, that's my two cents as a parent. But, you know, again, I think we've spent some money, and we can't spend, we can't continue to just spend money and say we got the wrong person and we go out with, again, when, when other parts of this, this formula so desperately need to be addressed, whether it be our teachers and providing them with increases or whatever the case may be, I just think that we, that's me, I don't want to get too far in it because I don't want to feel like I'm pushing the envelope from a council standpoint, but I'm speaking passionately as a parent.
Nice. Thanks for not pushing the envelope.
I would, I would just hope that this time around, and I don't know that I have the last name, that you won't rush just to hire somebody to say that we've hired a superintendent. And secondly, I'm wondering if Dr. John Simpson could be somewhat of a resource to us, because he works for a couple of foundations that trains as well as, you know, find superintendents. And he's right around the corner. And, you know, he might have some resources or some individuals that having, having worked in this district, he might have run across some individuals who could be a good fit that he already knows about or that he, you know, so.
Well, I'm going to tear the envelope right open. You got Mike sitting right here, and as far as I'm concerned, that's somebody you need to consider strong.
Mike's going to the Williams.
Well, we may have to change that.
And what is the timeline? I know we have a...
Did you ask Mike?
I know we have a deadline, and we have to meet in terms of timing based on the charter. But what happens if we get to a point where there's, there's no clear choice and we, we're at that date? I know we have a date that we have to meet according to charter, correct?
It's the, it's the state code. And we hope that...
What happens if we get there and we have no clear choice?
180 days.
I forget there, I'd say, to go off your charter, we're in unchartered territory. I, I don't know that the Board of Education has ever made the decision for a local board, but they have that right. And so that if we got there, we would work with them and, and have to work through it. But I don't know that, they, they have the right to make the selection for you under the state law.
Well, I ditto Andy, we've got Mike.
Okay. All right, that's far enough then, okay. Let me, on behalf of the council, I want to thank members of the school board for your, you know, for what you do. I'm serious, I mean, I know you guys spend a lot of time, you know, and recently, been under some pressure, we all have for this thing, but I agree with what the vice mayor said about the quality of education of our children, again, that's the most important thing. So thanks a lot. We're going to take a short break. What I'd like to do is start maybe in five minutes so you can queue up Mr. Pennington, so we can have him on the phone when we come back in here. I don't care.
You want them to eat cake?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm serious, that was the other reason I wanted to take a break, if they wanted to eat some cake.
Don't get it. Okay? All right. All right. Thanks. Thank you. I think I yelled.[1785.66]